Board of School Trustees Business Meeting to order. We are here at the Administration Building. It's Tuesday, December 8th, 2020, at 6:30 p.m. And I'd like to ask us all to rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to start out tonight with a presentation by Ashley Steffi, but Kim Corsaro is going to begin to introduce some of what Ashley's been up to lately.
Good evening. As you know, the district has been working on implementing MTSS, which is just a multi-tiered system of support. And kind of a summary of that, that's just a framework in which students are provided with both academic and behavioral support. So in response to that, a couple of years ago, we kept hearing from our teachers that they needed more tools and resources to deal with some of the issues that they were dealing in the classroom in terms of some of the mental health issues and the students that were coming to us and coming from trauma. So in response to that, we've done a couple of things. First of all, building administrators at the elementary level have rearranged schedules so that there's a counselor or a social worker in the building each day. When I was a building administrator, I would go every other day and I would have a counselor. And so there would be some days in which we didn't have a counselor or a social worker there. So we now currently have enough staff where we can have a social worker or a counselor in all of our elementary buildings. We also created a partnership with Meridian. I'm sure you all know that as well. But we continue that partnership and they do a wonderful job at providing behavioral clinicians to all of our buildings, K through the high school. And then we also created a position in which we call the neuro educator. Ashley Steffi is here tonight and she has assumed that role since we created it a couple of years ago. And her primary responsibility has been to provide professional resources and professional development to our staff of how to deal with those kids that are living in trauma or coming to us from trauma. And she also works collaboratively with our student SEL leadership team, Meridian and our counselors and social workers. So I just thought it would be good for her to kind of present tonight what we have done with this group. Our counselors, social workers, they have done an amazing job with everything that has been added to their plate this year. So obviously, I can't bring all of them in, but I wanted to make sure that they are also recognized tonight. But Ashley does a lot of work with them collaboratively. But we're just going to share with you a few things that we have going on in the district so that you can kind of see the behavioral side of MTSS and where we're going with that. So I'm going to turn it over to Ashley Steffi.
Okay, for those of you that don't know me, I'm Ashley. And I started the neuroeducated position last school year. So that was brand new last school year. Prior to taking on that position, I had worked in our elementary buildings for four school years as a social worker. And then prior to joining the school corporation, I worked for Department of Child Services for three years investigating reports of abuse and neglect. So that's a little bit about my background, seeing the trauma from like the firsthand experience and then in the school building effects of trauma. So what I want to talk about tonight is just give you guys a brief overview. Try not to be too long. I am very passionate about this, so sometimes I get a little wordy. But I wanted to highlight what I did last school year. For those of you that might not be aware of what I did in my position last school year. So since the position was brand new last school year, we're still trying, we were trying to figure out what it was going to look like and what it was going to evolve to be. So last school year, the main goal was getting across the language of the impact of trauma on the brain and what social emotional learning is. So last school year, I started going around to all of our school buildings and providing professional development for our teachers on the impact of trauma on the brain. So basically, what that looks like, how that affects the child, their learning, their behavior issues, mental health issues, those types of things. So the goal was to change the language to, I wonder, to like, what's wrong with this kid? They're driving me crazy to, I wonder if something has happened to them? Is there more to this story? So that's how I started this school year. And then I did an introduction for our staff on social emotional learning. So Department of Education has created seven social and emotional learning competencies, which are listed on the screen. And those are hard to see, but we have chosen to focus on three of those last school year and we're focusing on the same three this school year. So what we're focusing on is regulation, insight, and collaboration. So last school year, I provided professional development to our teachers on what those competencies are as well as how they can implement those in their classroom and try to point out as well things they might already be doing that fit in with these, just to get that language out there. And then last school year, I also focused on individualized support for teachers. So there, I offered teacher support if they were having issues with managing behaviors in their classroom or their mental health needs in the classroom. So I did have some teachers reach out, wanting me to visit their classrooms and offer support in that way. And then I had some principals that also had some teachers that they thought could use some extra support. So that's what I did up until March last school year. And then, you know, some other resources once we weren't in person. But so just wanted to let you know what I did last school year and then we'll go into this school year. So I did start this school year. There were a couple of buildings, Everton and Fayette Central, that I did not provide all the PD to last school year because of COVID. So I started there this school year to make sure everybody started on the same page. So Everton and Fayette Central have now received the same professional development that the rest of the buildings received last school year. But my primary focus since August has been on the social and emotional well-being of our staff. So I'll get into that in a minute, what I've been doing with that. But before we get into that, I'll highlight some other things that I've done this school year. This school year, due to having those e-learning days that everybody had, those two e-learning days, I was able to expand professional development to our bus drivers and to our instructional aides. So for the bus drivers, I was able to do some professional development this summer and then also twice on those e-learning days. So during my professional development with bus drivers, I focused on also sharing with them that same language of the impact of trauma on the brain so that they could begin to understand more what might be going on with their students when they come on the bus and they're acting up or they're causing a scene, whatever the case is, that there might be more to the picture there than just being a bad kid. That that's not usually the case. There's something else going on. So expanded that professional development to them and also work with them on the importance of relationships and how even though they might have this student on their bus for a short period of time, doesn't mean that they aren't able to build that relationship and that they aren't able to be that consistent person for that student. So that's what the bus driver professional development looks like. Also focusing on how to address behaviors, not yelling at students, and how to approach behavior issues in a calm manner so that we don't cause our students to become even more unregulated. And then the same with our instructional aides. I hadn't been able to reach them last school year due to their hours and their responsibilities during the day. But with the e-learning day, I was able to provide some professional development for our instructional aides along the same lines of impact of trauma on the brain and then introduction to that social emotional learning language as well. And then this school year, as Kim was mentioning, we're closely with our school counselors and social workers. We do have two new social workers in our elementary buildings. So I've been mentoring them and also providing guidance and support for them as well. And then in addition to that, I've created our lessons for our counselors to use the social emotional learning lessons because we want to make sure that they tie in brain language as well. So we're teaching hand model of the brain. I won't go into everything on that because we could be here a while on that. But we're teaching our students that language, what it means to flip your leg and so that they can use this hand signal with their teachers. It's show, I'm right here, I'm about to flip my leg, I need to take a break, something needs to happen. So that way, our teachers are using that same signal as well as in addition to some professional development that I provided to some buildings but plan to provide this school year as well. Teachers can use this signal with students as well to show, to ask them, you know, where, what's your brain state, where are you at right now? So that's something I'm helping counselors with, making sure that all of our lessons look the same, that way we're using the same language. And then I also do monthly newsletters that go out to all staff. And those newsletters have a variety of different information on social emotional learning, different tips on things they can do in their classroom, mental health resources, just different things every month on that. So in regard to the social and emotional well-being, as I mentioned, that has been my primary focus this school year. Because of COVID, we know that our teachers at the beginning of the school year, and unfortunately, still now, we're dealing with it still. So this is something our teachers have had a lot placed on, placed on them this year with online learning, all the different things I'm sure that you're aware of that our teachers have had to do. So I wanted to focus on their well-being because if our teachers are not well, then they're not going to be able to help those students and be able to address those behavioral needs that our students have. So some things that I've done to focus on the well-being of our teachers in the elementary buildings have been covering recess duties for teachers. They have a 15-minute recess duty that they have after their lunch or it might be before their lunch, which 15 minutes might not seem like a lot of time, but if they're able to be able to extend their lunch where they don't have to go pick up their students for that 15 minutes and they're able to maybe get some of, a lot of them choose to do extra work and not usually taking it for themselves, even though I urge them to do that, but just to give them the extra 15 minutes. And that, teachers were very appreciative of that, even though I was thinking this is only, I can only give them 15 minutes. They thought that was a wonderful idea. And then in middle school, I've been, I've covered Spartan Pride for every single teacher. Once, so since Spartan Pride, it's at different times this year. That actually worked to my advantage to be able to offer that break for them. Usually Spartan Pride is all at the same time, but with COVID, they've had to change that schedule. So during Spartan Pride, I was able to also provide a lesson to students while the teacher was taking a break. I provided a lesson on regulation and taught students to hand model the brain, taught them about coping skills, and that went over very well. Had not one single behavior issue with every class I met with. So which actually kind of surprised me a little, but they were very attentive. So that went overwhelming. Teachers were able to have an extra break with that. Something else I've tried to do is write handwritten notes to teachers, just positive message and put in their mailboxes. Haven't made it to every building yet, but still working on that. And then providing mental health resources and newsletters. That's something that I've tried not to use the word self-care a lot. That's something I've been guilty of overusing because sometimes when we say self-care, it just seems like one more thing that a teacher had that we're asking them to do. We're asking you to put more things on your plate. But if we focus on their wellness and provide those resources and that, that language, I think, goes over better than saying you need to spend more time with self-care because they don't, right now, there's, you know, they don't have time for one more thing. And many of us might feel the same way. I also have created a virtual reset room. This is just a place where teachers can go just for calming activities, whether it's just drawing a picture or listening to calming music. And then I have coordinated with some principals on additional wellness initiatives. Like for instance, Grand View, Mrs. McCann asked me to come there so that she could provide the teachers with a break. And then I was able to, we had a table set up of like treats for teachers to come enjoy hot chocolate and a cookie while she was covering their classroom. So that's just some other things that we've done with that. And then what I focused on was with the social emotional well-being. And then last thing, I'd just like to highlight what we plan to do the rest of the school year. So beginning of the school year, focusing on teacher wellness, that's not going to go away because COVID has not gone away. So we still need to be taking care of our teachers. So don't plan to stop with the teacher wellness when January comes. But we will be introducing some more professional development. We haven't introduced a lot of new professional development because beginning of the school year just was not the time for that when there's already so many new things being placed on teachers. So as Ken mentioned, we're going to be focusing on the multi-tiered systems of support. So in the past, most, most of our teachers, and you might even be familiar with the academic piece of that, where we're offering interventions or coming up with interventions, tier one, tier two, tier three interventions. So we haven't really put a lot of focus on the behavior and SEL side of that. So that's what we're going to be focusing on in addition to the academic piece, is focusing on what that looks like. We already have some interventions in place, but we haven't really sat down and thought about what does that look like, what's missing. So we've started the brainstorming process of that. And then we'll be creating flow charts and steps for our teachers to go along with that and looking at how that looks at elementary, middle school, high school, how different, how similar. So that's what's coming in the future with the multi-tiered systems of support, just really laying out what our interventions look like. And that what teachers understand as well what the steps are and creating some teams within the buildings to look at data, behavior data, and bring in ways that we can help individual children. And then I'll also be doing more professional development with teachers on behavior. I had sent out a survey in one of my newsletters where it asked teachers what additional professional development they needed. And almost 80% of those that answered said they wanted more on how to address behaviors in the classroom. So that's where my focus is going to be. And then again, additional wellness initiatives and then focusing on, we have two buildings that had a reset room. And if you were here last school year, Grand View came and talked a little bit about their turnaround room. So we're trying to change the name of that to reset room because we have another building that has a room like that now as well. There might be more in the future. But if you think of reset, this is where we're teaching our children, if we're teaching about the brain, we want them to go reset their amygdala and reset their brain so that it's regulated again. So we're trying to use that language with them so that they know that these rooms are a safe place and that they're just going to reset. They're not in trouble, it's just a place that they can reset and regulate. So working more on that this school year to make sure that both the rooms that we have are working in the same way, that teachers are using them in the right way and that the language is the same. So that's the focus for the rest of the school year. And I just want to close with just share something that I've shared in a recent newsletter that I think we could all probably benefit from. When it gets tough, turn around and look how far you've already come. So I think if we're being, I know if I'm being honest with myself, when August started, I did not think we'd still be done with all this COVID now or that it'd still be at the same level or even worse or whatever it is. But I think sometimes it's easy to get discouraged to think, how much longer are we going to be wearing this mask? How long are we going to be doing this? And for our teachers especially too, I want them to know that, you know, they've made it all the way to December. And we might not have felt that was possible in August. So sometimes it's, it's easy to look at how far we have to go without sometimes stopping and turning around, looking how far that we've come. So that's, I just wanted to highlight that. And I think we could all probably benefit from just looking at our accomplishments and looking how far we've come, how far we've made it. We've made it to December, we can keep going. So that's all that I have. Does anybody have any questions? I know I need to talk fast, we have a lot to say sometimes, but.
You're just doing a wonderful job.
We love what you're doing and it's great for our students and our staff. I mean, what a, what a great resource for our staff. Because typically, we think of your services as for students or for staff to utilize for their students, not for themselves. So that's a wonderful piece you're adding.
We couldn't be more fortunate that this started before everything else started because at least we had the procedures, we had something in place. Because obviously, with what has gone on with COVID, every issue that you're dealing with is exacerbated beyond belief with, with students and staff alike. So we're very, very fortunate to have started the program prior. So we've got it in place and we have a good starting spot. So we're not groping to try to find ways to help our kids.
I just have one question. Do you or do schools distribute something to parents so they know some of the language, so they know if their child comes home and?
That, that's not something I think we've thought about, but I think we, in the past, we had like monthly counselor newsletters. So I think that would be a good addition to just that.
I didn't know if parents are aware when their child comes home and says, I went to the reset room and they're like, uh-oh.
Yeah, and I know they do communicate, they do make phone calls with that, but I think that, yeah.
That's on an individual basis.
Yes, yeah.
Thank you, Ashley.
You're welcome.
So appreciate it.
Exactly.
All right. So now that we're all calm and we're looking forward because we've come this far, I'm going to seek a motion to approve the agenda as submitted and amended.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Andy. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Dennis or Dennis, put Dennis instead of first, all right. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Patron comments on agenda items, seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda, which includes the approval of minutes from the regular business meeting of 11, 10, 20, personnel report, retirements, resignations, leaves of absences, et cetera, the approval of the November 2020 claims, 57833 and 58044 through 58044, the appointment of Brian Hensley to the Fayette County Area Planning Commission, end of year business office procedures, and a donation of $842.50 from New Heights Christian Church to Everton Elementary to be used to help with the needs, meet the needs of students. So I would like to seek a motion to approve the consent agenda.
No, I'm personal, I'll make that.
Thank you, Chris. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Mark. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign, motion carries. We'll now move on to the action items. I know Mr. Harris isn't here, so Scott, are you taking over for the personnel report?
I'm the HR director. We have several recommendations for employment. Classified staff, Apolinar Amora, media assistant, CHS. Stephanie Browning, high school education assistant, sorry, high school. Head start, education assistant, Little Spartans preschool. If you didn't know, you haven't, head start at CHS. Joey Birch, part-time custodian, Eastview Elementary. And Larry Lucas, bus driver, transportation department. And then two extracurricular positions. Summer Rosenberg, seventh grade white basketball coach. And Zane Spurlock, varsity assistant swing coach at CHS.
Thank you for that. I'd like to seek a motion to approve the personnel report.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Lori. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ann. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Approval of food service equipment purchase.
Yes, me again. Randy Harris mentioned last month, with the, the food service program, Chartwells, there are rules with the state of Indiana with our account balance and with our, how much we maintain in our operating expenses. And sometimes people don't realize with grants and different federal funding up mechanisms, there are times when you have a threshold of what you, what you balance, what your balance can be. So we had some equipment that we were planning to replace. We are moving that timeline up a little bit because that's what the states have we had to do. But there are four items that we are wanting to purchase and have installed, including a dishwasher replacement at Carnaval Middle School, tilt skillet installation at Carnaval High School, and then walk-in outdoor freezers at Eastview and Everton. So those are four purchases, close to $90,000 that we will be using from our food service funds for equipment that we are replacing or installing for our buildings at this time. So I'll seek your approval for that.
Thank you. I'd like to seek a motion to approve the food service equipment purchase.
I so move.
Thank you, Ann. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Andy. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Approval of the professional service agreement, Mr. Collins.
Thank you, Mr. President of the Board. Since January of 17, we have entered into an agreement with Michelle Cooper, with Lewis and Cappas Law Firm. And we would like to continue that partnership for 2021. Michelle is one of the most respected school law attorneys in the state and in the Midwest. And she, this is now our fifth year and she's not raising her rates and all the terms remain the same as they did in 2017, which is unusual in this day and age. But she's a great benefit for us and a great resource to navigate through all the different challenges we have legally. So I would like to recommend that we continue this agreement for 2021 with Michelle Cooper.
Thank you for that. And I'd like to seek a motion to approve Michelle's professional service agreement.
I so move.
Thank you, Ann. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Lori. Any discussion?
She's fantastic.
Yes, she is. She does a great job.
She's been such a blessing to the corporation.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Resource Center facility update.
I have a couple of discussion items. I'll just jump in with both here. The first, the Resource Center, we have vacated that building. The last, folks who were there were with our East Central Service Center and they have moved to a new location in the ID Tech office space, the old D and M plant. And they're happy there. They, the accessibility, they have windows in their rooms and offices that they, and that is managed by the Economic Development Group here in Connersville. And they have really worked well with the Service Center to provide them an agreement that works within their budget and also been very accommodating with the space. So I'm on the board, I'm the president of that board for the Service Center. So I've talked with the director regularly and they're very happy there. So with that, as we've shared multiple times, the Service Center was our only occupant and within moving, that building is empty. And a vacant building starts going into disrepair even faster. We are maintaining basic services, but you know, at this point, we will be winterizing that if we don't have any needs. We thought we may need to use it for some quarantining for some staff and administrators. So we do have Wi-Fi technology still established in that. But Brian Hensley and his crew's ready to winterize the plumbing because there's a lot of work in excess of a half million dollars that would need to happen for that. I did share with all the county and city officials, if there's any interest in that building from another governmental agency, if they would like to have that building, you know, given to them or at some arrangement since they are a governmental agency. One gentleman expressed interest in looking at it and we have not heard anything since. We've had two people locally who've had, they contacted me interested, but they don't have the financial means or the not-for-profit status to do anything with it. And I was trying to meet with one of the gentlemen and he's never gotten back to me. I reached out to him a couple of different times here this fall. And I just think that the finances of it and securing that, the not-for-profit status was, after I explained that process to him a little, I don't know if I scared him off, I didn't intend to, but I just wanted him to be sure that, you know, these are some of the things you would need to be able to do. So this is just a discussion topic. There's no board decision here. I just need some guidance from the board as, you know, we conduct our business here in public, what your thoughts are and provide me some direction with next steps, whether that be, you know, do we look at just winterizing it and letting it sit and provide basic maintenance to it? I do worry about vandalism as the building sits there and the liability with that, just making sure that no one does get into the building and, you know, damage it more or.
What's the quote on "turn it down"?
Just an unofficial quote, we checked with Wolf Construction. They had done some other demolition for us with the, the two county schools a few years ago. And they estimated $175,000 for full demo, clearing the ground, putting grass seed and straw down.
That's a lot better than what I thought.
About 175. And they said winter is a better time because those, the heavy equipment people are not as busy when the ground freezes, but they can still demo and do things like that in the winter. So he believes we have better quotes and bids in winter versus the spring and summer.
Financially, is that something we can look into doing now or is it something we need to postpone for a year?
We're going to spend about $20,000 a year just to let it sit empty with insurance and basic utilities and having the, the metering set up and turned on. So we're looking at that kind of cost.
So next year, it's going to be a minimum of $195,000 because their price is probably going to go up.
Probably, you never know. It's just hard to tell, but that was an estimate he provided a couple of months ago, just without doing anything official. He just eyeballed it.
You ever take 10, 15% on that? So I mean, you, you know.
And there are certain requirements, like you said, for somebody to buy that?
Yes, it, I mean, at this point, it's not a school building per se. So we could go through the same process we went through with Origin Alquina and have a public hearing, if you're, if those of you on the board might recall. We had it at Middle School Alatorium and there were four or five individuals who presented ideas, but yet no one presented a viable plan. That was the hang-up from what I can recall then. Dr. Hodges, you know, led that, but that's what I recall. There was no viable plan presented. And so we extended it out another period of time to give people time. But the problem is coming up with the funds to take on a building like that. That's the biggest challenge in today's.
Scott, do we have any idea what the property's worth without the building setting on it?
I do not. I could get, I mean, you know, just the layout, a block of them.
Just the property might be worth more to us with the building gone than the way it is now.
Would you have any idea?
I would have to research that some more too, you know.
That's the information we can see.
It's a pretty nice piece of property and a nice location.
Yes.
Makes you wonder if it would be more attractive to the, a business closer to them, to that area that would be interested once that's done, once it's down.
I've thrown that out to businesses around there. There's not an interest right now.
Even after, that's what I mean. Once it's gone, I can see where it could be, well, hey, I'm interested again, so.
We might find a business who would want to purchase some of that for parking or something.
Could you, again, if the building were gone? Could you, again, if the building were gone, could you subdivide it into lots and sell it as home, you know?
I think we could, I mean, that would be, Lori would know more about the real estate. I haven't investigated that, but I would think.
Then I think you could do better than selling that.
Would there be a zoning issue?
It would be a possibility.
The zoning issue, I'm not for sure. That's out of my knowledge.
Yeah. I've spoken to one of the people who's spoken to you about getting a group together. And quite honestly, I spoke to him this last week. And he said, it's COVID that's caused the issues. It's a group of people that would like to do something with that building, much as the people in Laurel did with the old Laurel Gym.
Same gentleman, yes.
Yeah, and so they're getting instruction from Gus, and Gus Adams in Laurel as to the process that needs to be gone through. And back before COVID hit, it was looking pretty good. But the COVID has just put a halt to absolutely everything that they want to do. They're still incredibly interested in doing it. But the financial insecurity that's been caused across the board by the COVID situation has just made it very difficult for them. They would love to get it together. The group of people are very committed to doing something for the youth of Fayette County. It would be their plan, if they can get the funding, would be to use it for an athletic facility, use the gym, and then use the other parts of it as office space for small not-for-profits or something like that to offer at a very reasonable cost. And what didn't scare them was how much it was going to cost a year to really maintain it because apparently they had heard from the people in Laurel that that was not completely out of line. I just hate to see something, I know these people that are involved with it, and I've known them for a long time, and they're just very frustrated because they thought they had a pretty good plan. And then the world changed drastically for everybody. And it just threw a big monkey wrench into all their plans. They would still like to do them, but financially, as you said, it's just a very difficult time right now because some of their investors are not sure how much they're going to have to invest because of, because of the overall situation.
It will definitely take money to get it up and going.
Oh, yeah.
And then the parking lot's also collapsing where the old original high school that was Junior High South, when it burned, the powers that be at that time decided to cover over, bury a lot of that foundation. So there's some, there's some issues in that parking too that would have to be.
It's sinking now.
Yeah, it is. And that's what's causing the water penetration in the lower level and that wall called, the foundation wall is collapsing there along the Grand Avenue side of that building, so.
Scott, we kind of started this process a little over a year ago, is that right? And trying to find somebody to sell it, take it away roughly a year plus?
About eight to nine months ago.
Always nine months, okay.
Yeah, about approximately when I started, well, it was maybe, I guess it was last winter. I don't remember the date, but yeah, it's been a while.
I think we've done our due diligence in trying to find somebody else to take over the building and revamp it, do whatever is necessary. My inclination would be, you know, let's just say it's $200,000 to tear the thing down. And it's costing us 20 a year for maintenance, upkeep, insurance, all that stuff. You're looking at a 10-year ROI, so it's almost like, it's not going to get any cheaper. I, you know, as much as it pains me to say it's tearing down a building, what value is it to the community? And plus, it's costing the taxpayer $20,000 a year to maintain it. I think the writing's on the wall in my mindset. I think that if we could find somebody to tear it down for that price, I know it's an expense that it's tough to incur at this time, but what other option do we have? What really serious viable option do we have other than to tear it down? And I don't know.
Short of a group like that who would be able to come up with the funding and grants, that's the tough part right now for them because I think the intent's good.
Well, and also too, is there going to be, did we abate all of the asbestos in that building a few years ago? Because when we did the renovation at the middle school, we thought we had all the asbestos out of there. And then when they started tearing things up, we did not have all the asbestos out of there, which is going to push the cost of the tearing it down way up because of just the procedures that you have to go through not to put that asbestos in the, in the.
That would have to be thoroughly, that would be part of the bidding process if you put it out there. There could be some tiles, the floor, the old floor tiles that were covered over with carpet. They're fine as they are, but stirring, there is a process that would add some cost, but it probably wouldn't be extreme if it's just the tiles. I believe all the other asbestos is been taken care of. But that would be up to them to, that would have to be part of the price for sure.
Can we, can we get bids and then go from there and see what we're, you know, what they come in at? Because, I mean, that's just a roundabout figure.
Yeah, there's nothing firm on that. That's just an estimate.
Right, because if it was up to $200,000 or if it was down.
Bids without, through the process with a request for bids. So really, that was just an eyeball of this gentleman, just as courtesy to us.
But I'm sure we have to go ahead and winterize it anyway, so from now, whether we get them, it's that time.
Yeah, and that buys some time, a little bit of time, not a whole lot. Or anybody else, and then we have to do what we have to do at that.
If we're going to move now, we probably need to do it here in the next couple of months to take advantage of the pricing, I would think. Because when we get into spring and summer, prices will be higher. Or else we kick it down the road to next winter and be here again. And, you know, my hope would be to find someone who would be willing to take it on. But you're going to have to spend money on it with roof and heating and some foundation work for sure. It's going to be hundreds of thousands of dollars to make it safe. And then it's the accessibility piece. It is not handicapped accessible now.
Well, I think the other thing is too, that it's built below grade.
Is what?
It's built below grade. You're going to fight water constantly. I mean, you're never, that's a battle you're not going to win unless some major architectural structuring, something goes beyond my, my skill set. I'd be just, it just looks like it's, to me, I mean, I hate, I'm not trying to be a, you know, a negative person about it, but it's just comes a realistic time that I just gotta, you know, I mean, I just.
I just want to avoid any, I was sitting at those meetings when, about Alquina and Orange getting torn down. And the dissent in the community was pretty bad. And, and, and there was a lot, a lot of dissension. And I think this open forum is really good if people are watching on Channel 3. You know, we're talking about this. It's nothing going on behind your back. We're trying, we're really trying to be as transparent as possible about it. But this is kind of where we are. Because there was just a lot of, well, Chris, you were there. And there was a lot of really negative feelings about the Alquina and Orange situation. When the schools closed and then it kind of got better. And then when the buildings were torn down, it was really, really bad again. And I think we want to try to avoid as much of that as we can by being this transparent. And just saying, look, people, this is, this is where we are financially. This is why we have to do this. And I don't think there's the emotional attachment to Junior High South that there was to Alquina and Orange, but that's the old high school, so.
The auxiliary part was, there's not, there's not an architecture, like our middle school auditorium and the architecture.
There's not.
There's not anything much adhering architecturally to that. It's a block building that has settled and has a little bit of smell to it. But, but what I worry is, you know, the reflection on our school district with an abandoned building. And people, if, if another group takes it on and takes care of it, that's good. But if they don't, people will be pointing their finger back at the schools for not taking care of the building, even though it's not ours.
True.
I mean, we took that from a building out east of us, an old school building that used to house our special ed services, if you know which one I'm talking about. And we would take complaints about that as, it's not our building. Somebody else owns it. So that's my other worry is, you know, I think back growing up here, where Wendy sits today, there was a grand old school there. And then, you know, the Fifth Street, the Eighth Street schools, the 30th Street schools, those were beautiful old buildings. And so it's a, it's a decision that is just, I think, life that sometimes buildings age themselves out.
And it's not a beautiful building.
No.
It's addition to a beautiful old building that burned, basically.
I agree with what Andy said tonight. And I, I still want to make the point that I think it's worth more to us with the building gone and try to get rid of the property that way than try to deal with it with the building standing.
I don't think you're going to have any, I agree, I don't think you're going to have any takers knowing, even if the property itself, you know, with the building going like that, they're looking back and saying, geez, that's a $200,000 expense as soon as I buy the, buy the property, you know. And I certainly get what, you know, Mrs. Kirshner's saying, you know, I, you want to do your, I mean, yeah, you, you don't want to have that, you know, the hometowns people upset with us for tearing down another building. I get that, you know, and especially it's probably a little more sentimental with, with Alquina and Orange because those serve communities, especially, you know. But you got to do what's best. And I think in this case, it's, you know, we've got, you know, beautiful fieldhouse that we built. So we got plenty of, you know, athletic space there, not needing the gym. Of course, now that, you know, East Central's found another location, it's better than what they had. I just, I just don't see a lot of positives for waiting another year in hopes of trying to find somebody else. Because then you think, okay, well, we wait a year and try to find somebody else to come up with grant money for this thing. Nobody's really, I'm not saying they're not, but I'm just saying chances are they may not. And then you just spend another $20,000 roughly. And I, my recommendation would be to solicit for some bids. That's my recommendation. I don't know where the rest of the board members stay.
I would concur, yeah.
Yeah, I think we need, I think we need to do that and really draw the line and say, look, we're going to have to have hard and fast a deadline here because we just can't afford not to do this at this particular point in time. And that would be unfortunate if the other people couldn't get it together, but that happened, so.
We also have to look at, you know, if another one does, thinking about this winter, if that parking lot started to fall in, what's the winter going to do on top of that?
It's been a long-term issue there.
So there's another cost that they would have to compensate for that building, take care of the parking lot so cars don't fall into a sinkhole, so.
The zoning piece, who would you recommend talking to there, Lori, or is that somebody you could talk, find out? What could we do with that land legally?
I could find out who the connection could be on that, definitely.
Okay, if you could let me know, we could, I could get some information for the board. We could also offer a time like we did with the other buildings and have people, you know, organizations or not-for-profits could submit plans. I mean, if you want to go that route too, just to give groups a chance while we're getting bids for demolition. But with a short turnaround like them. Like I said, this has been going on, I have to look at my calendar, but it may have been February, January. I can't remember, so it's almost a year.
We knew though that East Central was going to be out by the first of July.
Yes.
Yeah, so I think when.
And I gave them a six-month notice, so I guess it has been about a year.
Yeah.
I mean, would you say that you fairly solicited for, I mean, you said you already talked to a couple of city and county officials?
I just sent letters to the mayor, to the city council, county commissioners, county council. And one gentleman from one of those groups came and looked at the building. And that was the end of it, pretty much. I think that they're in the same position, the funds, they don't have the funds to take that on. I think there was some interest by one or two gentlemen. It's the reality, coming up with the funds to make it safe and accessible is their challenge. So this is, this is helpful. It provides me some direction. So Lori, if you could check on zoning of that? Because you're right, the property may be worth more that way too, a block of land right there.
All of the things right there are basically zone commercial because you've got the funeral home, which is kind of, funeral home is the way that one is, is kind of a mixed-use zoning situation. And then you've got residential completely on the other side. But on that side of Grand Avenue, you have mixed use of residential and commercial. The flower shop used to be and the beauty shop and the funeral home and a couple of other things. So that would be something that would need to be looked into.
And then we can prepare a, just three solicit bids and advertise that too, just to see what the demolition cost would be. Does that sound good?
Sounds good.
No, perfect. Thank you for that direction. The last is Andy's board seat, Dr. Yarian. And I just wanted to be sure that you all are updated on the process with that. So until Dr. Yarian resigns via written letter to the county clerk and the board president copy, you're remaining in the current position. You could remain in that.
Indefinitely.
Indefinitely.
Until the next election.
Until the next election, if you would like to do that. But if you do choose to resign at some point, the board has 30 days after Andy's last day of service on the board to fill that. So I think that'll depend on what your decision is. But then at that point, the 30-day timeline starts. And then just what our board policy and what the guidelines are with the state. I talked to Lisa Tanzel, who's attorney with the Indiana School Board Association. And I also talked to Michelle Cooper, obviously. But Michelle, you know, and Lisa work closely together. So Lisa had written some legal briefs and things on it. So I contacted Lisa, that's part of our service with ISBA as well. And some guidance for the public and for the board to hear. The board is not legally required to advertise a notice concerning the vacancy. However, in board policy, Fayette County School Board Policy 1.10, it is recommended that we do advertise that. When or if the notice about the opening is posted, we would do so on our webpage and in the local newspaper. And we would also include in that notice that the board retains the right to reject all applications. That is your right as a legally elected board to do that. The board must conduct interviews of the candidates or applicants in a properly advertised public meeting. So if we have three applicants, we would, the board would interview in a public meeting. So that would be something that some people may not be aware of. They would need to come in here and be in a public meeting to do that. And then the board would fill that vacancy in a public meeting with a vote. And because Andy could not vote at that point, and that would have to be a super majority of four votes in the positive for any of the applicants to be placed on the board. In Board Policy 1.09, for prospective board members, they must reside within the district from which he or she is to be elected, at least one year prior to the application. And then they cannot be an employee of Fayette County School Corporation, a paid employee, and they need to be a legally registered voter in Fayette County. So those are things we can confirm. But those are the prerequisites for anyone who might be interested in seeking that position if Andy decides to vacate that position and resign.
So Scott, where do we go if there's no applicants?
We keep Andy.
Well, I mean, we just had an election and there were no applicants.
I know. The board ultimately has the right to select someone. It has to be done in a public meeting. So if there are no applicants, it really does come down to keeping Andy on.
He won't let you go.
Yeah, exactly. He won't let you go. Or, you know.
But he's already, I mean, we're talking, when Andy, whenever Andy turns in that letter, I was going to say, I really don't want to wait until his last day. Because then we have another, you know, even though we have 30 days, then that seat isn't filled till the next month. So we miss out on, that person misses out on opportunity. My experience, of course, my very first time on the board, I was appointed and went through that whole process. And I know.
So did I.
Okay, and with, and we've had a couple of those occur, so we're familiar with that process. And there were always people ended up.
Yes, there was.
Having interest, so.
Not optimistic, there would be.
Yeah.
Sometimes people just don't want to run for election, that they would be more than willing to.
It's intimidating some people, but yet there's, I haven't spoken with anybody that's, you know, interested, I mean, in the position itself, but I mean, I haven't been very vocal about it either. But it's, I would like to think that there are plenty of people out there, especially within my district, you know, our district, there's pretty dense population of people.
You're talking about Connersville, the city of Connersville.
Yeah, so I mean, it's, that they would, people would jump in and, you know, want to contribute, so.
I would think that whenever Andy submits that letter and we have that date, that even if it's not until February or whenever, that we let the public know, either through the newspaper or through your app, the app we have, whatever, even though applications might not be taken for another 30 days or whenever. Because I'm not sure, does it give a timeline when you have to accept applications?
Well, one, you do not have to wait until his last day or the last 30 days. You can fill it more quickly, but that person can't officially be seated in and sworn in until. So let's say Andy resigned February 28, then effective March 1, would be the first date. But we would have to, you know, public, the board would vote on him or her publicly with a super majority, four votes, and then we would swear that person in. Similar to what our, the folks who ran again this time, you will be sworn in at the January meeting again when we reorganize. So that would happen, so my hope would be that, that's how it would work out. So that person would just automatically step in the day after Andy's last day officially. So that would be, yeah, we could post it at your discretion whenever the board wants to go ahead and put that out there. But we can't do anything until. to go ahead and put that out there, but we can't do anything until there is an opening, which is when you have formally submitted that letter to the board.
Right, so I would say, once Andy submits his letter, then I think, I mean, we're already, we're publicly announcing that this is likely going to take place, so that people can begin to start thinking about it. I mean, we are in the middle of the holiday season, people may not want.
Andy, you let us know early on that that was not your, it was not your intention to, to do this, so it shouldn't, it's not going to come as a great surprise to anybody.
I just want to be sure that all that's communicated here in the meeting, so you know what the requirements are. So really, it's at the board's discretion if you direct my office to post that notice.
Do they write a letter?
First of January.
What do they?
When, yes, when, when someone makes application, they would submit a letter to the board president showing their interest during that time period.
Okay.
And then the board can meet an executive session to review the applicants, but they can't interview or make any decisions in that meeting, and all that has to be conducted in public.
Is that prior to the interview, or is that after the interview, that the board would meet in private?
You could, if you have more than three applicants, you can meet there, or you can meet to this, but you cannot discuss attributes of the candidates or anything, or make any, you know, Andy, or Chris couldn't say, well, I want this person. It would, all that has to be conducted in public, as we do with all of our other business, so yes.
So we'd have to establish those meetings, I mean, because.
We would have, yeah.
Okay.
So, and in that meeting too, you can exclude if there's more than three, you may exclude, but you have to have at least three if there are more than three who apply. That's part of the legal statutes with that as well.
So I think we'd have to see how many applications we've got, and then if we've got more than three, I just want to be clear on this, so again, would we need ahead of it to say, oh, we've got six applications we need to review because we're allowed to throw some out, right?
Yeah, you can review an executive and discuss, but you can't have deep discussions about who the best candidate is, or make any predetermined decisions on who that person would be. But you can't go over the letters, and, you know, the board president would control that conversation as far as, these are the people, but we can't say we want this person or we think this would be a better, it's more just, are, you know, neutrally listening to the attributes of each and reading their background and their, why do they want to serve in that position? And then in a public meeting, they would come in to interview.
Okay.
I'm checking my notes, make sure that's all.
And then they would leave that interview, public meeting's over, and then we have another public meeting where we make the decision in public?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, typically you would.
They'd be short, little.
Right, and you would have your, just everything that you decide to discuss about the person that you're going to select has to be done in public in the, yeah. And so typically, according to Lisa Tanzel, what, what happened is, the board, let's say there are three individuals who come in and interview separately, then the board would take a recess of a week or several days to think about it and make it, you know, for you each to do that individually, not discussing together, and then you come back into the meeting to discuss strengths of each one and who you feel is the best fit, and then somebody would bring a nomination.
Okay.
A second, close nominations, that same formal Robert Jewell Award process.
Okay.
And you would need a four out of six votes for a person. Yeah, so all that's conducted in public, so.
Thank you. Now we know where we stand, and we'll let Andy make his decision about when he submits his letter, and then we can decide.
And if he doesn't submit one, then he'll just keep joining us.
All right. Tuesday night date, because one's on Tuesday night date night. Okay. All right, thank you for those discussion items. Public comments, persons wishing to make the board aware of suggestions, ideas, or comments may address the board at this time. Comments involving personnel or students must be discussed in private. Seeing none, we will move on to superintendent's discussion group reports.
I do have one item here that I think will fit here, I was putting a mask back on. Mark says on our calendar committee, has been a board representative for a few years.
Long time.
Does an admirable job, and that committee's made up of parents at different grade levels, and teachers, and support staff, and administrators. So we were contacted by a parent, what, a couple weeks ago, Cindy, three weeks ago, about the Fayette County Free Fair, set their date for the 2021 fair, the first week of August, which is when school starts for Fayette County schools, and has since I've been back. And we were consulted with, we didn't have a date when we made this decision, the board approved our calendar March 10th of this year for next school year. So it really presents a dilemma for us, because we will be bringing teachers in on Monday and Tuesday of Fair Week, and kids come in Wednesday.
Oh, no.
So the fair is basically a week later.
Then what, it has been, I asked Kim, because she's been very involved in 4H over the years, and it's, in my, in the past seven years, I went back 17 years, it's always, we've, we followed suit with our calendar committee. So I'm just concerned, because this is putting us in a bad place that really wasn't our creation. And as much as I love the fair, and my grandfather was a lifelong farmer in Columbia, and I, my kids were in 4H, my wife helped with 4H and was in 4H, I guess I just need a little, you know, just want to make you aware, we will be reconvening our calendar committee for the 2223 calendar this winter, probably February, but at this point, if we move our start date a week later, our first semester is already two days shorter, it's 88 days versus the 90 that our goal is, so if we move a week later, we're going to be at 83 days.
We'll be, we'll be in essence where we are this year.
Which, yeah.
Yeah, and, and the argument has always been, they wanted to get the high school things done before Christmas. My thing would be, let's see how it goes this year with having it after Christmas, because we used to do that years ago, and then we went to the before Christmas, and see, see, the, the argument was always made that the impact of having that time off during Christmas break impacted kids as far as their final exams and that kind of thing was concerned. So with, with us not having our semester in now till, what, January 13th, because we started.
We started a week later.
We started a week late. I just, I just foresee incredibly negative blowback from the community as a whole, because there are a few sacred cows in Fayette County, and one of them is the Fayette County Free Fair. And if we have kids that are showing animals, and, and when we tried to do this once before, it was, it was really bad, the people were incredibly upset, because the kids are showing their animals during Fair Week, how did they get out of school?
I just didn't know, I just thought that it would be good to have a conversation with the Fair Board, just to understand what prompted them to have to move.
Yeah, why did they?
Because, and I thought their schedule was always based on the state Fair, so those kids could go right from the county fair.
Guys to state fair.
So I don't know, state fair might have been.
Well, the state, we didn't have a state fair this year, so it's probably.
What triggered it?
Well, I just wanted to.
A domino, a domino effect.
Right, I just, I guess for me, this isn't really our issue that we created here.
So, but we have to live with it.
And so do we, do we dictate our schedule around a decision made in November for the fair? That's what, I just want some, this is an open discussion, but I thought I'd better make you aware, because this has crossed my plate here, we were made aware of it by the phone call.
Just in November, you said?
Yeah, it was, it was before Thanksgiving, wasn't it?
Okay.
Right, before Thanksgiving, so I am going to contact the Fayette County Free Fair Board and just make them aware of the challenges, because, you know, short of, shortening fall break and Thanksgiving break, or shortening Christmas break, winter break, you know, we would, we would be ending the first semester in the second week of January, probably.
When is the beginning of Christmas break in '21? What's the last day of school or whatever?
The 17th, so it's a week before Christmas, that's the way.
Does Christmas fall on a?
Saturday, exactly.
Could we do a, could we do a Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday? We've done that before, we've gotten out on the 22nd, we've got on the 22nd, the last day of school has been the 22nd of December many times, so we could have done a Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, so that takes care of the three days of it right there. So there could be a lot of juxtaposing going on as far as the calendar, but I don't know why the, the Fair Board did what they did.
Well, I think that's the next step, I think, I would tell you, Scott, probably contact the Fair Board and just see what they say.
I just want to make you aware that this is something we may have been looking at down the road with board approval to change that, or we keep it the same and ask them to change it, or, yeah, to be consistent with what's been done in the past. Mark, do you have any thoughts?
I don't know how soon they can sign there.
Well, not only being on that committee, but being in 4H my whole life, and, you know, I think, what if they changed it to the next week someday? I mean, I'd be really curious to know their reasoning. It's always been that, last week of July flipped over, I have no clue, I'm really interested to see what they have to say.
Well, I will contact.
And how much they've already consigned, like, have they gotten their, their midway rides already, have they booked those?
I have no idea.
I'm glad you got a phone call.
Yeah, that would have been really fun to hear, like in March.
It's actually pretty sizable.
We'll go with it.
Just want to make you aware, it's just something, came across, and the fair is a sacred, sacred thing in Fayette County, and I love it too, so we all do.
So many of the, so many of our kids participate in, in, in 4H, and it's such a positive educational thing, and basically you're saying, okay, academics are here and you got to go back to school, but you've worked all year on your 4H projects, and now you have to work around your school schedule to show them and to do all these kinds of things, and, and I just don't like the message that that sends. I don't like what the Fair Board did particularly either without kind of letting us know, but like Mark, I'm real curious to see why they made that, why they made that change.
And by then, these kids are so used to working around schedules, they may handle it without any problem at all?
Well, the absentee problem becomes a real problem, because the kids don't come to school, is it excused, is it unexcused? It creates a attendance not nightmare, we used to even have to deal with it with kids that were showing at the state fair once we'd started to school, and that's a much lower number of kids that are participating in the state fair as they do in the, as they do in the county fair, so. But that was always an issue, kids showing stuff at the state fair and having to miss school, that it, in essence, just started.
Well, I'm not trying to throw us into a political mess here, but at the same time, I'm, I'm here to advocate for our schools first and the education of our kids, and we've done our part in planning this well in advance. So I guess that for me is my biggest disappointment, that we weren't given any consideration.
Which I think is a good heads up for them too, so whenever you have a conversation with them, to let them know, you know, we set this calendar a year ahead.
The problem is, we set the calendar, and I push really hard on our other five districts that feed into the career center, that it's a domino effect now, and they're not going to be happy. I can tell you that these city districts for the Christ of it are not going to be happy, that they're going to be barring the start of school a week later, because I pushed on them to get the fall break and spring break dates, you know, and they've been really great, the boards have been doing that the last few years. So it's a domino effect for us, because it's more than just the start.
Well, and, and the Fayette County Free Fair typically is one of the latest county fairs in the state to begin with.
It is.
Most of it, most of them are in, well, Wayne and Rush Counties are like end of June, first part of July.
So there's more than just that, and so I am going to reach out to them and see if that's something they could move, but if we may be confronted with that, then the personal piece is a big issue, because they have to get their dates in for the programs.
But we, we could possibly have a little flexibility if we can move Christmas break, not have, not have the 17th be the last day, because like I said, we've been in school on the 22nd many, many, many times over the years. It's not terribly popular, but.
But then those other schools will have to move their five districts too, and that's going to be the hard part. There are some boards, I don't know if they will want to consider that or not, so.
Yeah, I would say let's just call our Fair Board and.
Exactly.
Think the fact that they notified you is obviously they're cognizant of the fact that when our school starts.
No, it wasn't them that notified, Scott, it was a parent.
No, a parent, I would make us aware, concerned. Maybe the board isn't aware, they didn't take into consideration when school starts.
Right, and I think that's just another piece of information too, they need to know we make our calendar up.
And maybe they'll be, oh my gosh, I forget, we didn't think, right, let's, we'll move it back, no problem for the board, who knows? You know, it's just keep an open mind and reach out to them.
Well, we've had our calendar out though for a long time, I would have thought that if they know how those things mesh or don't mesh up, that would have been something that the, the Fair Board should have been cognizant of before they set their dates.
So just, no decisions or anything now, but I just would make you aware, because there is, everything affects everything with this.
All right, principal directors reports. I just have a real quick question for the principals and directors who are here, how are you guys doing?
Day by day.
Day by day.
We're very.
Day by day.
We're very.
Use Ashley's thing, where's your lid?
Your kiddos are hanging in there?
Yeah, they're hanging in there.
Yeah, okay, good to know. All right, Director of Human Resources report.
I have nothing tonight.
Director of Operations report.
I have nothing tonight.
Assistant Superintendent report.
I'm good.
Okay, Superintendent report.
I've said a lot tonight, so I want to acknowledge our ministers who are here, it's a TMF, and, you know, it's, everyone's feeling the challenges, and, you know, good leadership helps keep that ship moving and keep morale up, and I just think all of them, and of course, all our staff, I've said that over and over, but it truly, until you walked in their shoes and to see the, you know, Kim and I estimate 75% of our day is spent, and I would say that Randy Judd's probably right there, Brian Todd, that you're spending the bulk of your days, and I'm tired of it, I think we're all tired of it, you know, Leslie and I were talking the other day, let's hear the good stuff, you know, what Ashley's trying to do, and what the things that happen in there, those good things happening too.
That was one of the things I brought up to Scott, which I was glad he had Ashley come in tonight, just because every time we've had a meeting, Scott's had to inform us of one other thing related to COVID, or we get an email or a message that, you know, we're back to hybrid or whatever, and I, it's like, can we hear something really wonderful happening?
Great timing tonight, so.
Yeah, so that was really good to hear. All right, for the good of the cause.
Well, good, good news, and it's something very small, but the CMS, which is very dear, near and dear to my heart, their basketball teams actually played a home game last night, and the kids were so excited just to play. The crowd was great, people were wearing masks, they sat in their little pods, it was a really good game, and the kids were just so grateful just to play, and with, and expend a lot of energy, the seventh grade looked really good, the eighth grade was playing without their best, really their best player who was in quarantine, and the other kids really, really stepped up, and it was just fun, fun to see something, is one of the little voices, you know, Ms. Kay, this is abnormal, he says, I don't like wearing a mask, and I don't like doing this, but we're out playing, and this is normal, and that is so important with these kids whose lives have been turned upside down and inside out with stuff that they shouldn't probably have to deal with at their ages, but we're back, we're back playing ball again, and that is such an important part of the middle school and the high school, and even to degree the elementary school process, so we're, we're getting there, and I, and, you know, we're, are we orange now?
We're still orange, yes.
We're still, it's like, you know, didn't love orange before.
New color code comes out tomorrow.
Bleeding red and white, but let's, let's not go back to red, yeah.
Scott, are we on our schedule for the next week and a half, because I decided yet?
At this point, the high school is on, you're talking about school schedules, the high school is on hybrid this week, and we're going to reevaluate Friday with Dr. White to see, we talked with Brian, Brian's talked with this staff about where they're at. The nice thing with this quarantine period dropping to 10 days, that's helping with the number of kids and the length of timeout, that's a big help that, with the changes there. So optimistic we can finish the, this, this year strong and get through 2020, so we'll know Friday, I think, but hopefully.
Yeah, count down the days.
But at least we have the hybrid schedule in place, and it's, it's working. But at least we have the hybrid schedule in place, and it's, it's working.
Right. No, the premise, you know, I had a parent ask me, why, why are you doing that? We tried to communicate that, but one of the benefits is, you know, you can seat the kids farther apart, too, when you have half the kids there. So you don't get into all the quarantining through the social contact, the contact tracing. That's a really big factor with it. And nothing is ideal. The best thing is to have every kid in there, but we are concerned. We're concerned there are some kids that are just not fulfilling the terms of the online learning, and there are kids who are doing hybrid who aren't fulfilling what they're supposed to. So we, we're watching a lot of kids, because there is a concern there. But it's really about just getting smaller groups of kids at our biggest school, so we have smaller class sizes to teach that live learning every other day. That's the biggest benefit of hybrid right now.
Well, some of the, for some kids, e-learning is just not their best way to learn, and that makes it very, very difficult. So having at least part of the time in the classroom is such a benefit to them, because the e-learning is just not, doesn't work for a lot of them.
That's looking promising. The next school year, we will be back to a sense of normalcy. That's, that's the hope. That's the light at the end of the tunnel. It's the summer, hopefully.
We will wave happily goodbye to 2020.
All right. Mr. Hahn. Second by Dennis. All those in favor, second behind, raising your hand. The post, same sign, meeting at 10:00.